I'll call this meeting to order the February twenty second. Should start over, the two, 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 meeting of the year. Tracy, can you roll call, please?
Harrington?
Here.
Sittig?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Wason?
Here.
Thank you. Item three is the approval of the agenda, and I'm gonna make one adjustment to the agenda. I'm gonna move item eighteen up to between nine and ten to let Laura get out of here a little bit earlier if she wants to. Otherwise, there are no other changes to the agenda. Go ahead.
Sorry.
You got a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item four is the consent agenda. Is there anything on here that you guys wanna pull out and talk about separately? Alright, seeing none, could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item five is time for public comment. Is there, if there's an agenda item, something that's not on the agenda that you wanna bring to our attention, now's the time during that public comment section. Anyone for public comment? Seeing none. Alright, Kevin, I'll move over to you for city engineer report.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I have two projects to give you an update on tonight. First one's Dubuque Street Phase One project. We do have a pre-construction scheduled with the contractor for March first. The late start date for that project is March twenty eighth. The contractor has told us that they may start a little bit sooner if the weather is favorable. So it could be as early as mid to late March. That's probably when that's gonna start. We're currently in the process of scheduling meetings with some of the directly impacted property owners in the area, just to make them aware of the project and explain the contractor's schedule to them. The second project is the Jones Boulevard Extension Project. The design work is almost complete. We are submitting a hundred percent final review set to the city staff on March seventh. Planning to issue bidding documents late March. Public hearing April twelfth, bid opening April nineteenth, and award a contract. Second meeting in April, if everything goes well. Lynn County R E C will also be relocating their overhead electric lines for that area sometime in April to underground. And so construction should start sometime in May and be done in the fall, about September. All I have, unless you have questions.
Any questions for Kevin?
Is there gonna be a big impact on Penn Street, do you think, there, or?
I don't think so. They'll go up to the roundabout and shouldn't be too bad.
Do you mean on the Jones project?
Yeah, on the Jones project.
Oh, the Jones.
Yeah.
No, no. We'll have access, and there'll be a little bit of work on Penn Street, but we still have an extra lane, so we don't have to, no lane closures.
Okay.
Any other questions? Alright, thank you, Kevin. Item seven is the city administrator report, Ryan.
Yeah, thanks. Just to make you aware, our staff is meeting tomorrow for our goal-setting planning session that will then lead to the city council session in a month. So our meeting is tomorrow morning. We're meeting with this group then March twenty-third, as a reminder, at four P M. And we'll take all four hours of your time that evening, so please, please plan accordingly. The only other item of note I had is at the next city council meeting, we'll have an ordinance on the agenda regarding smoke-free parks. This has been something that the county has been advocating for. The recent, county health has, they recently presented to the park board, and the park board is making a recommendation to the city council. So that first reading will be on the agenda for your consideration in March. And other than that, I don't have anything further to report this evening.
Any questions for Ryan? Thanks, Ryan. Item eight is the mayor's report. Got a number of things in through here, but as the agenda says, I'm gonna start off with the proclamation that we have here. As for kidney day, whereas one in three North Liberty residents are at risk for kidney disease, and one in seven residents have kidney disease with only ten percent being aware of it, and whereas it is critical that attention be brought to this often overlooked but increasingly common disease, major risk factors are diabetes, high blood pressure, a family history of kidney failure, and over the age of sixty. And whereas early detection and treatment of kidney disease could result in fewer North Liberty residents requiring dialysis treatments or transplantation, and whereas the National Kidney Foundation represents North Liberty patients, transplant recipients, people affected by kidney disease, their family members, and care teams, and whereas the month of March is National Kidney Month, and March tenth, twenty twenty-two is World Kidney Day, now therefore, I represent that the City of North Liberty do hereby proclaim March as Kidney Month and March tenth, twenty twenty-two as Kidney Day in North Liberty. And Lee, would you mind coming up and introducing yourself? You are, yes, sir, thank you. You are a North Liberty resident and here to accept that, that would be great.
Yeah, so just in way of introduction, my name is Lee Sanders. I'm representing the board, member, I'm a board member of the Iowa-Nebraska National Kidney Foundation. My personal tie to kidney disease is I'm a kidney physician at the University of Iowa. So on behalf of the board, and also as a physician at the University of Iowa specializing in kidney disease and a North Liberty resident, I just wanted to come and thank you for recognizing next month as National Kidney Month and also the day of National Kidney Day.
Terrific. Thank you very much for coming tonight, Lee, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Lee.
Alright, I got a few other things I wanted to just touch base with you real quick. First of all, I had what is going to be my last Think Iowa City Board meeting last week. Rakesha is going to step in and take over on that role, starting in the March meeting on there. So thank you in advance for doing that. But the last meeting was a doozy, so there were a number of things to remind everybody about or make aware. Just like we're doing some visioning here in the city for the next, this year, Project Better Together, Project Better Together twenty thirty is in progress. And that's, that's an effort by which the Think Iowa City, ICAD, and the Chamber are going to be working together to feel, realize some efficiencies. So look for that to be coming up here the rest of this year. It was announced that U W W Freestyle Men's and Women's World Cup is gonna be coming to the Extreme Arena in December, and this is gonna be the second time that the Iowa City area has hosted this, and it'll be the first time that women's teams will be involved in this as well. So it's a big win for the community. Restaurant Week is going on right now, and that goes on through Monday of next week. Moving on out of there, last Sunday, I had an opportunity, and I was invited to the North Liberty Baptist Church right near, right off of Jordan Street, right there. And if you've driven past it, they installed the steeple, and that is a pretty big deal for a church. So they asked me to come talk for a few minutes at their service last Sunday, and then they presented this plaque that I'll pass down for you. So I just wanted to thank Pastor Gibson for inviting me and for the congregation for inviting me as well, and that's, that'll be for us to have here. And as I said in my comments last week, the North Liberty skyline looks a little bit fuller now, a little bit different, having that steeple there. So pretty neat story. Two other things that happened on the calendar, I guess, is that the ICAD breakfast was last, was that last Thursday? Ryan and all of the other city planners, administrators in this, throughout the community, presented a lot of good information there, and you put all that stuff. We think we're doing a lot here in the city, there's a lot going on throughout the entire county. And then lastly, on Friday afternoon, Chief Venega and Ryan hosted a chamber legislative update, and it was well-attended, we had probably thirty people there, I'm gonna guess, and both Senators Kenny and Walls were there, as well as Masher and Jacoby and Nielsen. And I just wanna say thanks again for hosting that at the, at the P D. That's all I've got on there. So I know that I've asked a couple of you to share some things for tonight, so I'll move into item number nine, which are council reports.
Alright, so I'll go first, and I attended the twenty twenty-two annual banquet, business partnership banquet.
What day was that?
That was a couple of Wednesdays.
Yeah, a couple of Wednesdays. The days are speeding by. Where President Barbara Wilson from the University of Iowa was the keynote, and their mayor already kind of talked about the twenty thirty visioning project that Better Together is working on. So they shared a lot of the successes and the challenges that were faced over the last year, and also talked about the visioning project. President Wilson also talked a lot about the work that the university is doing and how they're partnering throughout the corridor, and they have some very big things going on as well. So with all the things that's happening, it's good to hear the successes even, you know, during all this, all the challenges time with COVID, and just some of the setbacks that have occurred. There's still a lot of wonderful things going, some big visioning projects coming forth. So if you are a person who gets frustrated with construction and traffic changes and all that, just gear up, because they will continue to happen. But I think, you know, down the line, you'll look back, and it will just be an awesome sight to see. So it was very good to see so many people out and supporting the banquet as well. And so thank you, North Liberty, for being a part of, of that, and for us having a table there, too, to be amongst fellow businesses and community leaders as well. That's all I have.
Thank you very much for that update. Gentlemen, anything else to add? Could one of you speak to the special election coming up? Anybody on that? I can do that, too.
Well, I know we have three candidates.
We do, we're very excited about that. Do you guys have anything that you wanna, anything else to offer?
Yeah, Mayor, so as I do frequently, went out and engaged some business owners last week, up and down Rancho Way, to get some feedback on how the construction went. A few of them wanted to remain anonymous, but one particular business owner, Johnsey's Liquor Store, did say that I, I could use them as an example. They, they would like to see in future, future projects out there, because we have a phase or two left, that the signage just be a little better, that we do a better job of drawing attention to the fact that businesses were open down there. That was a really rough time for the businesses down there. I know that staff did engage all of those business owners, and I certainly appreciate that, but did want to bring that to attention. And as we look at Dubuque Street as well, you know, that will have some impacts on some businesses. So just do, continue to do our best, we are doing a good job. But if there's anything at all that we can do to help communicate that businesses are open and minimize impacts on businesses when construction season is going, I certainly wanna see that. So appreciated the feedback that I got from those business owners down there, appreciate their patience. They're glad that it's over, and business has bounced back rather quickly, so it's, it's good to hear that as well.
Anything else? Ryan?
Okay. I'll just say that I was able to attend the, the Business Partnership Banquet as well. And if you haven't heard Barbara Wilson speak, I thought she was very good. And she talks a good game, and I hope she, she can, can back it up, so. But I also plan to attend the Affordable Housing Coalition meeting on Friday, and I was able to attend the Anti-Racism and Social Justice Group meeting that occurred over the weekend. There's a grassroots organization here in North Liberty. And I was, was able to hear Micah, our outreach coordinator, speak about all the things that she's doing. I was really impressed with her, so.
Agreed, yeah, she's a fantastic addition to the city. And I'll just mention briefly that we are going to be having a special election to fill a council vacancy seat there, so we can get five up here. And I wanna thank Ashley and Samantha and Robert for all three throwing their hat in the ring for this special election coming up on March fifteenth. Okay. As noted, I'm gonna move item number eighteen on up there to our agenda right now. And if you're following along in your packet, that's page one sixty-two. And I'm just gonna ask to fill a vacancy on the park board with Laura Olds. Laura, you don't have to say anything, it's rare that we get someone to come here, and I just wanted to thank you for submitting the application. As you'll notice on there, it was October since she did that, and she's gonna be filling this vacancy for us. It will, though, just be temporary until she leaves the area for a full-time employment. So we're gonna squeeze every bit of energy and help out of her in that meantime. So I don't think I need to make any, anything else on that. Grant, what does it mean by affirmation from the council of the appointment? Is there any action that the council needs to take?
Let's do, do a motion.
Do a motion, okay. Could I have a motion for the appointment, please?
So moved.
Second.
Do we need a roll call?
No, just a voice vote.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Awesome, thank you, guys. Laura, thank you again.
Thank you.
Wanna raise your hand? Oh, we all see you nodding back there. We're good, thank you. Alright. As noted, we'll move into item number ten, which is our F Y twenty-one audit now. It's all yours, young man.
Can you all hear me? Okay, perfect, so my name is Dustin Olpats, I'm a supervisor with Bergen K D V, and I'm here to present the fiscal twenty-one audit. So excited about the opportunity to be in front of you again. We had to take a year off from the in-person due to COVID, but excited to be back here. If you have any questions during my presentation, feel free to just ask them as you have them, otherwise we can catch them at the end. I get pretty passionate about government finance, I'll just blow through my whole spiel unless someone surrounds me. Okay? So kinda looking at the audit process, so it kinda, there's a few different phases. There's the planning, where I called Tracy, we go through the year, kinda what additional risks the city could have this year, what are kind of the new things. And then we have field work, where we actually come on site, and we look through disbursements, we look through receipts, we, you know, do transactional testing, all of that good stuff, look at the internal controls. And then the, the next three kinda go together. We send Tracy and Ryan the draft reports, so that they can review them and make sure that we have everything stated fairly, and, you know, clerical errors, all that good stuff. And then final reports are in your, were in your council packets, and then the presentation tonight as well. So that's kind of the, the process. As far as components of the audit, so what the city essentially pays us for is to express an opinion on the city's financial statements. And we do express an unmodified opinion, which is the best, the best opinion we are allowed to give as our auditors, to provide assurance that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. The Office of the State Auditor also requires us to do some compliance testing, so they issue a checklist essentially of specific state statutes that they want us to check compliance with. And we did have one finding related to that test work, and it, it was pretty, pretty minor, just debt service disbursement exceeded the amount budgeted. We also look at internal controls, and we did have a one internal control finding. It's the same finding the city has received the past number of years, at the same level, a significant deficiency level. So it's the lack of segregation of accounting duties due to the limited office staff and kind of the overlap of some of those duties because of, yeah, the smaller size. So now we'll get into like some of the analytics. So we'll start with the general fund. So looking at fund balance, the city's goal is to have about twenty-five percent in reserves, twenty-five percent of operating expenditures in reserves. And at the end of the year, at the end of this year, you were at about forty-eight percent, so almost double. It essentially means that the city could operate for about half the year without any additional income. So it's, it's a very nice cushion to have, especially in uncertain times. Looking at receipts, so receipts increased about eight hundred thousand. About half of that was in taxes and assessments due to an increase in the property tax levy, as well as having a better collection year. And the other half of that was in intergovernmental. The CARES grant money came in, so you spent it in F Y twenty, it came in in F Y twenty-one because you're cash basis, that's just, you kinda have those fluctuations. Looking at disbursements, total disbursements decreased about a million dollars. So capital outlay decreased due to purchasing a pumper truck in the prior year. Culture and Rec decreased due to limited program offerings due to COVID. Community economic development decreased due to just less development in F Y twenty-one. And then those decreases were offset by some increases in public safety due to bringing on some public safety employees, an additional police officer, an additional fire employee, as well as cost of living adjustments and step increases. Next, looking at your enterprise funds, so your, your water sewer and stormwater, we look at the operating income. So the operating income for water was about two point two million, which was a slight increase from the prior year due to increased usage and increased number of customers. And then sewer was the same thing, where operating income increased a little bit due to the same thing, increased number of customers, increased usage and all that. And then stormwater decreased a little bit, just due to some additional repairs and maintenance drainage costs in that fund this year. And so these operating incomes don't include your capital projects, and they don't include debt service. So like, for instance, water had three hundred thousand dollars of capital projects and about one point seven million dollars of debt service. So when you, you look at that two point two million dollar operating income, you also kinda have to factor in your debt and your capital expenditures. And then same thing with sewer, so three point three million, but you had one point seven million of, of debt service disbursements, and then I wanna say two or three million dollars of capital outlay with that, that southwest, southwest growth project. So when you're, so this is kinda deceiving. So from operations, it looks like they're doing really well, but because you are cash basis, you're not factoring in depreciation or, yeah, any of your capital expenditures into that number. Last but not least, looking at the cash position of those funds. So if we start with water, which is that green bar, the, the water cash position has stayed pretty consistent for the last five years. The blue bar, which is your sewer, you can see that decreased pretty significantly this year, and that's related to that southwest growth project, which you did issue bonds for in F Y twenty-two to kinda build those reserves back up, but at the end of F Y twenty-one, you can see it dipped. And then the little tiny green bar down way at the bottom is stormwater. So that decreased a little bit this year because it had to reimburse the general fund for some of the capital costs incurred in prior years. That was a lot. But that was all I had. This is how you get ahold of me if you have, if you'd ever have any questions or concerns. But yeah, if you have any questions, I'd love to hear them.
Dustin, thank you. You guys have any questions for Dustin? Yes, sir.
So when, you know, we, we have limited staff, and we always kinda get that same little kind of question. Do you have, do other cities have like a, a couple people that just do this, or, I mean?
I mean, it's depending on, you know, the size of your city, obviously, because it's always a, a cost benefit. You don't wanna have ten employees just sitting around doing nothing, just so you can get all the controls in there. But you do wanna have enough controls where everything's at least, you know, trying to get reviewed. It is at a significant deficiency level, which is a mid-level finding, so it means you have enough checks and balances where it's not a material weakness, but there's not enough checks and balances where we can get rid of the comment entirely.
So like, how many people would we have to hire? Would, is there, you have an estimate? Do you mean, do you have to have two people to double-check each other, or?
So it's, it's tough to say, because every single process, you know, receding, disbursements, journal entries, all of that has to have someone doing and someone reviewing. And so it's not necessarily a, a number of people you'd have to hire. It, it could be like shuffling around duties. I know with the, the new software, there's some, there are some like review tools and, and things that could be implemented, but honestly, I, I wanna say ninety to ninety-five percent of our cities get this comment in some form, just because it is really tough to, to say, properly segregate all of those accounting duties. And yeah, it's definitely a cost-benefit analysis, because you want, you, you want your processes to make sense, right? Like, you, you want all of the review and everything and all that good stuff, but you also want your processes to be efficient and to make sense. And yeah, I don't know if I helped.
So Brian, one of the things that Tracy and I actually were just talking about is, is putting together, for lack of a better term, an internal controls plan on what it would really, what it would take to eliminate this deficiency from future audits. And so we're gonna spend some time on that this spring, summer, just figuring out what could we do from a reorganization standpoint? What would we have to do from a new employee standpoint? Not necessarily to implement something right away, because it might be cost prohibitive, but to at least
Have an idea, yeah.
Give us the groundwork. And as we, we have some retirements coming up, there's a potential for some reorganization there, or we suspect we'll have some retirements coming up. And so I, I don't know that we'll have an answer right away, but I think we can put together some framework that will help us eventually get rid of this.
Something we can move, move towards, yeah.
There, there were changes, though, Tracy, from two years ago to this point, if I recall. We had the same thing, we had the same discussion. You guys had made some internal changes on reviews. So I guess my question for the audit company, does every single transaction, every single piece have to be touched by two people, or can it be a quality control audit of a sample size per quarter? I mean, it can't be realistic that every single thing can be double-checked by three people in the organization.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, it's tough, though, because that's really what the segregation is getting after, is, you know, nothing gets through without a second or third person looking at it. And so you can have some of those, some of our, our bigger cities do, do like, you know, audits, like internal audits, where they'll go and they'll just randomly pick, you know, a sample or whatever, but that's mostly, they're doing internal control checks to make sure that the people that say they're reviewing are actually reviewing and are signing off on stuff. It's not really a, you know, making sure their proper disbursements, it's more just like an internal control check to make sure that the processes they have put in place are actually in place. That makes sense. But yeah, segregation of duties, the goal is to have everything looked at by multiple people.
So Tracy, question with new software, how much staff time did this save this round?
Sorry?
With the new software, how much staff time do you think this saved? Was it significantly easier? Was it a lot less staff time in production of documents for these folks?
It was, well, not this year. This year was, because we had two financial systems that we had to marry together. And we could, I couldn't have done it without Dustin. Dustin knows our financials inside and out now, down to every penny. So we had to marry those two systems, which, so it was harder, harder rather than easier. But going forward, it has the capability to take away staff time, because the auditor can have direct access to the system and pull everything that they need without staff having to pull a paper copy or have any intervention at all.
Is there any internal I T controls that can offset some of what they're, without staff time? I mean, flagging things, identifying abnormalities?
Part of the new system, there are a lot more approvals throughout this, and, and steps throughout the process. So it's a matter of us getting truly familiar with it and sitting down and looking at those processes. So it may be a matter of, we may have more segregation, we may have more people, two people looking at every transaction. So it's really drilling down into that, but we're still, we're still working to marry the two systems. So putting, inputting data Putting inputting data from the old system into the new, we haven't gone live with utility billing yet, so it's still, we're still operating into financial systems.
And I would note that our IT director is pretty familiar or familiarizing himself with the software too, so he's already developed specific reports, for example, for a department or a management team person who has a specific need. And so as we identify those types of things, as everyone gets a little bit more familiar with it, I think we'll we'll have some efficiencies there also.
Questions, anything else for Dustin or for staff? Dustin, thanks again for coming down and doing this for us. Item B then is the resolution. Number twenty twenty-two dash twelve, accepting the audit report for fiscal year twenty twenty-one as completed by Bergen K D V. Can I have a motion for that, please?
So move.
Moved and seconded. Uh, any other questions or comments? Okay, Tracy, real call, roll call, please.
Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Sittick?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you again. And he's out of here. He's out of drive. All right, item.
He heard you, mayor.
He wanted to make sure it passed. All right. Item eleven is the transit presentation, and please welcome to the podium Angela.
Hi, I'm Angela McConville. I'm the special projects coordinator for the city of North Liberty. One of the functions I do is run the North Liberty Transportation Assistance Program. So I was invited here a little bit to talk about our transit situation. And what's going on to kind of give everybody an idea. Now, my presentation, I'm also very excited about transit, Ryan will admit. Um, and my presentation's a little bit longer, so I'm going to go really fast. Feel free to stop me if you have any questions. All right, this should also be in your packet, and it was emailed earlier as well. So we start off with common reasons you want to leave the house. Um, I just kind of given giving you, I just threw a bunch of things out there, just giving you kind of a perspective of of how you leave and where where you need to go and why you need to go there. Um, one thing I left off was kids, I'm constant, after I leave work, I'm constantly driving kids around. That's a really important part of being able to to drive on my own and um, get around. The pandemic changed the transportation landscape for us. So before the pandemic hit, people with mobility issues who who had other abilities, lived with other abilities, you know, they would call for accessibility and we would say, oh, well, you know, we'll get there eventually. Well, the pandemic hit, we all all of a sudden got on Zoom, we made all these changes to our technology, we got people acclimated to technology, so now we move differently. Um, so people like seniors can go online and participate in Zoom, um, they don't necessarily need to travel anymore. Um, so just start thinking about that as some, I throw out some of the numbers later that that things have changed since the pandemic. But this also is a privileged change. So a lot of office, you know, jobs went from being in in the office to suddenly virtual, and they might remain that way, but that's also for a select few um, that have the privilege of being able to do that from their home. Essential workers still need to be in person at the hospital um, at the grocery store, so we need to make sure that we're serving those people as well. All right, sorry, Russ Snack. I'm going to talk about a little bit about auto-oriented development. So my background is transportation planning. So this is something I'm passionate about. Um, when we think about transportation, sometimes how we solve our problems and how we've grown at as a city in the United States, uh, might not be as um, viable for transit. So we often solve congestion problems with adding more lanes. Which is great, thing, places like Rancho Way, we really needed more lanes, that's important. But when we think about adding more lanes, you're adding a longer crosswalk, you're adding more space that people need to cross. You're also solving that problem by, uh, and you're not thinking of the times that aren't congested. So here we got, you know, four lanes that we have to maintain, and we only really heavily use it in the morning and the evening, and it's just sitting there. So is that the best way of solving that problem? Large commercial setbacks. So when when something is set back, you're prioritizing the the car, the auto, audio or auto-oriented. Um, so when you cross a Rancho Way to get to Fairway, you're suddenly now having to cross a busy parking lot to get into Fairway. And if you'll notice, I like using Fairway as an example, there is a perimeter sidewalk, but there's not a sidewalk to get from there to the store, even if you're coming from Sugar, was it Sugar Creek? And there's not, you have to actually go into the drive, the curb cut to get into the parking lot to get into the store. So accessibility, so we're thinking about the car first, and then the walker or the transit user who's going to be dropped off somewhere else and have to walk to the to the fairway, you're thinking about them second. Also, when you think about Rancho Way, the commercial that's right next to Fairway, uh, you have to think about barriers to the neighborhood. So it's embedded in a neighborhood, which is really cool. But it also has a fence behind it. So if you live in the neighborhood, you have to kind of mose your way through, you know, the the garbage or area through grass. If you're in a wheelchair, you can't do that, you have to go all the way around, and then you have to go into it via the curb cuts where the cars drive. So thinking about those accessibilities, we've built our environment to be very car-centric. And then moving on, mindset of retrofitting transit later, instead of thinking ahead and developing around transit. So transit, like traditional fixed route service requires really dense pockets, so that that creates this natural hub where people go to get on the bus. The the distance that they need to go from their door to the bus stop is really short because they're all in there densely, so then the ridership can be great. Well, we don't, we haven't really, I mean, North Liberty, we like our homes with large lots, it doesn't really make transit. Um, we're not really growing to be very transit friendly in that case. But when I think about opportunities, we've got this medical hub coming, so let's think ahead before it starts coming. How can we maybe incorporate transit to get people to and from that hub who live in North Liberty? You need a map to get from point A to point B. So in North Liberty, there's a lot of cul-de-sacs, you know, meandering roads, there's sometimes, some neighborhoods have one entrance and exit. You need to kind of have a map on your phone or on your car to be able to get where you're going. So if you're walking, you know, you can't just walk through someone's yard to get somewhere else. So just having those connections is really important to encourage like to encourage transit so we can have, you know, a route set up that will serve people. Also, Ryan always points out, um, I like to think in rectilinear, you know, that's the goal with roads is a bunch of um, squares or rectangles. Well, um, we have the railroad that kind of dissects North Liberty, which we only can cross that in a couple of spots. So that's kind of impeding our transit future. All right. Now, reasons for not driving personal vehicles. So in North Liberty, there's not a lot of options for transit. So it's, you really need to have a personal vehicle, but there's as someone who's been running the transportation assistance program, there's lots of people who live here who are not able to drive a vehicle for various reasons, and these are some of the most common. So somebody has a physical impairment, it could be temporary, permanent. I have a couple of people who live here who live with seizures. They just can't get a license at all. They're perfectly capable of working, full-time jobs, being successful, but they can't drive because of their seizures. They can't get a license. Fear of driving, this is mostly what my seniors say. They don't want to drive after dark, they don't want to drive in any inclement weather, they need someone to help them. They need an opportunity to choose not to drive. Um, and given an opportunity. So N L T A P often fills that void for them so that they're able to get places without having to rely on driving themselves. Also, parking anywhere. So none of them want to go downtown Iowa City because then they're going to have to find a parking space. No driver's license. So I have a couple of people at N L T A P that are working to get their life back in order. They have to go through all of these things, they need to go through all these steps to get their driver's license back, so. Um, but needing to get around is still important to them. Um, if somebody's current vehicle is unreliable, um, it's, you know, you commit to a job, but then all of a sudden your car breaks down and you lose that job, that's happened several times as well. And then people have personal choices to not drive, and I like the idea of talking about transit. And how do we get people to choose transit? So as we think of the future and the things that we want to do here, um, here's some of the ways that kind of one of these four things kind of people hang their hat on and choosing to not drive their personal vehicle and and choosing transit instead, so a time savings. If you can get from home to work and shave off fifteen minutes, that might be enough for you to choose transit and not drive on your own. If you have financial savings, uh, that you can realize and, you know, wear and tear on your car, if your car's not reliable or parking is expensive downtown Iowa City, that might be enough for you to do the van pool and choose transit. If the first and last mile, so that's that concept of getting from your door to the bus stop, and then at the end of your trip from the bus stop to wherever you're going. If that first and last mile is short, and if it's convenient for you, you're going to use the transit. Um, and then again, personal driver or or personal vehicle or driver is not as reliable as transit. Stop me if you have any questions. Okay, so here is an overarching look about at what we have for transit here in North Liberty. So when someone has um, a need to get somewhere and access to something and they don't have a vehicle, we kind of go through all these options with them. We have the Corralville Transit Route. This comes in the morning to swoop up, grab people and take them into Iowa City to work, and at the end of the day, it grabs all these people from Iowa City and brings them back up to North Liberty. That's basically only function it has. Um, so if you, because if you have a doctor's appointment at twelve o'clock in Iowa City, you're spending the entire day in Iowa City, you might not want to. A lot of people complain, well, I can't sit that long, you know, it's it's older people with medical conditions, you know, they really need to be able to get back home sooner than but eight hours of sitting in Iowa City. Um, and if you'll notice, uh, we do over about three hundred rides per month, and that averages out to about eight people for each trip. So a trip in the morning, we're taking eight people in Iowa City and back home, eight people. And so that's about a fifty-dollar round trip each day to take someone to work. And if people work outside of those hours, which a lot of people do, especially if they're essential workers, if they're low-income jobs, they they their jobs do not fit within those hours. So some of the pros is that I don't spend a lot of time on this. I mean, we get a bill from Corralville Transit every three months, and then, you know, I don't really do much with this, so that's nice. Um, it's predictable and reliable, it's low tech, so you just have to know to be at the bus stop. You don't have to do any technology to gain it. It's just there for you, it's predictable. So if you are unable to um, get in and out of the Corralville bus, we, by ADA regulations, we have to have, provide a pair of transit option that matches it or is better. So we have Johnson County seats fulfill that service, so they do trips Monday through Friday at seven AM and four forty PM to fulfill those. They do an extra trip for us at twelve thirty PM. Um, so they're a little bit better and more convenient, but still, it's a long day. If someone has a twelve o'clock appointment, which they'll complain about that to me, then they're sitting there all day waiting for their seats to pick up in the evening. It requires um, an application process through the city of Corralville. It takes about six weeks to process. So it's not very quick to get on this. So if somebody has a situation where they're being discharged from um, the hospital and and going home, this is going to be a while before they get access to this. But I do want to say the seats pair transit people are awesome. Um, I had a comment from a senior just today that she wouldn't have known how she would have gotten to her hair appointment if she if it weren't for seats and they were super friendly, so. I appreciate that. So we have a transportation assistance program that I run. There's a little video, we can't hear the video, we can't hear the audio, so I'm just going to breeze by this, but this is on our webpage if you want to watch it. Dina was on our transit advisory committee who helped craft this program that I run, and she kind of walks you through how you use it. Um, so we do about a hundred and forty rides a month. That serves actually about thirty people on average a month. We, I have at any given time about a hundred people on this program, it's card-based, you get annual access to it. Um, and you have an expiration date, but at in any given month, only about thirty people out of those hundred use this program. Each trip is a dollar, you have to actually qualify, so it's not open to everybody. Um, you have to fall under one of four categories. Either you don't own a vehicle, or if you do own a vehicle, it's broken down, that's fine. Number two, financial difficulty. So if you're at one hundred and eighty-five percent of the federal poverty level, you also qualify. Which one and two often go together. Um, the third is if uh, you're permanently disabled, so if you, it just involves a very basic note from a doctor, you can have access to this program. The fourth way is if you're temporarily disabled. So I've had people with knee, both knee replacements. They just need this program for three months. We get, we give them access for however they need till their doctor says that they're good to drive again, and it's been super helpful in those cases, so I really appreciate that. Um, people being able to access this because of that. Destinations are very limited, though. So you're only able to access this um, for things like grocery or medical appointments or um, ge- getting all your government paperwork in order. It does not cover work transportation. It will not cover daycare trips, getting the kids dropped off at daycare before work, it won't cover that. It won't cover if you're going to school in the or during the day, so those are major limitations. But it really does take care of the bulk of the really necessary-to-life things, so people appreciate it for that. And yellow, we also have the ADA equal to that. So we have yellow cabs that will drive people around, and we have yellow transport, so that takes care of the wheelchair rides. So it's the same exact service for everybody, um, which is great. They're a little more expensive, ADA rides, but worth it. I do like um, this program because it allows me to establish really close personal relationships with people, so I work with them one-on-one, we often solve other problems together in their life and get them access to things. Um, I go into their home and we to onboard them because it's this kind of a private process to kind of get them access to, you know, people are proud and they don't necessarily want to do something like come to me when they don't have transportation, I'm not going to ask them to come to City Hall to do this. I'm going to go to them where they're at and we visit. Um, sometimes I'm sitting there with them for two hours because they I'm the first person they have talked to because they're a senior in a couple of months. So, you know, it's really been a nice to establish personal relationships with some of the residents here. We do a lot of troubleshooting together. Okay, so here's back to that original list. If you notice, N L T A P really only covers that first one. I guess it goes to the community center, so exercise might be in there too and fun, but really, it it only, um, it will only take you to very limited destinations. Uber and Lyft. So if anybody has, works a third shift job or eh, needs transportation outside of the hours, N L T A P or anything that we, this is really our only option to point them to, and it's not a reliable option. So if you're familiar with um, Uber and Lyft, uh, the the availability varies greatly on when somebody's in North Liberty, and then it's way more expensive at certain times of night. So so often people are burdened financially by using this program to get to and from work. Late night trips can be expensive. It's great because it's twenty-four seven, but it's not reliable. Next is carpooling. I I never suggest carpooling to people. Um, it's, you know, everybody on N L T A P, so those hundred people, the the seventy people who aren't using it every month, they're usually just using their family members to get them to and from places. But, you know, that's medical stuff, that's not things like you have to get to work at a certain time. So carpooling drivers, you know, aren't necessarily always reliable unless they're incentivized to get people to work and back. So and if, in my example here, three people rely on Joe to get to work, then all four people miss work when Joe is sick. So it's just leaning on someone that heavy, uh, I don't suggest it myself. Other people can use that as a plan of action. Also, we met with the Iowa Cancer Center right before the pandemic hit, and one of their concerns is that if people miss cancer appointments, um, then their prognosis diminishes. So they're they have a plan of action in place, but sometimes people miss doctor's appointments because they can't find a ride or the ride's not reliable, their carpooling falls through. So and then I ran after um, Lee earlier because there's not enough dialysis chairs in Johnson County. So getting people to and from dialysis, they often, because it's so frequent, they often rely on family. But they can't really miss those because there's so few chairs here. And then N L T A P won't take people up to Cedar Rapids where there's more chairs. So while my program is great to fill in for that, you know, So while my program is great to fill in for that, you know, it won't actually go up to Lynn County. So, you know, there's things that we can work on, hopefully getting more of those down here. And we do have a very cool carpool matching app here in Iowa. It's just takes a lot of advocacy and communication to get people to use that stuff and then commit to it. So, yeah. That carpooling is not a safe, reliable option for people. Okay, our older adult community has special supports that aren't accessible to other people. So we have Trail of Johnson County, which actually is open to all ages, but really, it's focused on the older adult community. It costs $600 a year, though, to access their transportation services. And then you have to request a ride several days in advance so that they can match you up with a volunteer. So it's not something that's good for really those immediate needs, short notice needs. Aging Services also provides some essential trips. So they're expanding. This is something they just kind of started doing recently, and they are just now working on getting their vehicle accessible. So that's not even, it's, it's still in its infancy. But they're doing good work about getting people in the Lynn and Johnson County area to medical appointments, or the grocery store, to hair appointments, stuff like that. But that also requires several days' notice so that they can schedule it in. RSVP United Way, that's 55-plus volunteers matching with 55-plus people who need rides. So, but those are only for medical rides, and those are free. Corleville and Iowa City Bus Lines both initiated free bus service if you have your Medicare card. So that's great, but that's that first and last mile. How do we get people from their home in North Liberty to the nearest bus stop to get to use that Iowa City Corleville bus line? That's the problem. Okay. Oh, why do we need more transit? I'm throwing this in here. So I have a few comments from my North Liberty Transportation Assistance Program people. So I do a lot of case management to try to get them, help them solve problems. I do sit down with them a lot. We have a lot of email and text exchange. These are some of the things that I've heard from them. "I'm trying to get my vehicle fixed, but this one place is a hit or miss, and they almost never answer." "I'm not sure how I'm gonna pay for this. I hope it's simple." So there's not a lot of social services funding for car repairs. That's, that's, there was an Embrace Iowa grant this last year that I sent out to all my NL Tap people. Like, "Apply for this, because it'll cover some of your car repairs." But it doesn't reach everybody, and there's a cap to that. "I'm ecstatic about this newfound employment opportunity, but I say this with deep sorrow. I've declined the position until a time when I know that I can do it all on my own. The cure to my issues is to ultimately move to Corleville or Iowa City, giving me better access to the resources I need." So that's, I find, a lot with people who need to get their kids to daycare and then go to work. They, and there's no opportunities for them unless they have their own personal vehicle here, which again, is expensive, especially upfront cost to get a vehicle, than to maintain a vehicle. So, so a lot of people then just break their lease and move to Iowa City or Corleville, where they have access to more transit. And that makes me feel like, I mean, I love North Liberty. I want to make it better. So that's, I want to make it more inclusive for everybody to be able to live here and not have to feel like they have to move. The next person with no license, "It's hard to get anywhere for work when I'm on the opposite side of town." So this is a person who lives on the other side of the railroad tracks and kind of wants to get closer to the commercial area, but that's where this person is living at the moment. "Part-time work would help me with mental issues, and I wouldn't be home alone all the time and bored." So this person is trying to get their life in order. They just don't have their license. They can't get it due to legal reasons at the moment, but they're working towards making their life better. "We took NL Tap to the U of Iowa for my chemo. If we would have paid full fare round trip, it would have been $60." No one can afford that. Unrealistic for most people, especially us on disability. So that's pretty common. People love NL Tap because it gets them to and from the hospital, which is a very expensive trip. Okay. Employers. So recently, I got, I was reached out to by a local temp agency who wanted to talk about transportation in North Liberty and the things that they were seeing. So, and one of the things that came out of this meeting was they said 90% of our applicants don't have their own vehicle, and they rely on transit, which was not a surprising number to me at all. If somebody's seeking this kind of work, a lot of the times, they needed more assistance. They're struggling a little bit more. And they, they reached out to me in particular just because they work with some North Liberty businesses. So they're really hoping that, you know, recruiting and retention, they spent a lot of money on that, and they want, one of their problems is lack of public transit, and that decreases their pool of candidates. And the temp agency also mentioned that even coming to them, because they have to go to the temp agency to sign paperwork, you know, even getting that trip taken care of is sometimes an issue. And under NL Tap, I'll prove those one-off. So I, I know when people are really trying to get employed, because they'll call me and they'll say, "I need to go to the temp agency. I need to sign stuff." So I know people are working to get their lives better, but that transportation portion is sometimes difficult. Okay. Environmental, of course. We have to think about that when we think of transit. I didn't have really a slide for that, but as we, you know, take cars off the road, then we're, you know, being more green, and that would be awesome. So that takes, you know, the people who choose transit over driving their own personal vehicle. I want to grab, I want to encourage people to do that, too. So Area Social Services. So I do a lot of collaborative work with these groups. So we have an Area Senior Coordinators meeting every month where we talk about things like dialysis. How do we get married to dialysis? And we talk about the new things that we're doing with transit. There's a lot of collaboration. So that's Aging Specialists, Jeff Kelbach and Steve Nockhazel, who's the Johnson County Navigator. Johnson County Social Services. So the Mobility Coordinator holds meetings every quarter, and we talk about Johnson County transportation transit as a whole, which is great. But she'll, you know, often email me with case, cases where we need to get somewhere from A to B, and we, we kind of figure out how to do it. We piecemeal it together. I work closely with school family advocates to get some of their parents on this, because one of the destinations for NL Tap is school, which was added kind of after we did a survey. So that was a really beneficial one. So Jill Wenders from ICCSD. I work with her quite a bit to get people access. I was, okay, so future. I was recently contacted by Mica, who is our Outreach and Equity Coordinator, and she's working on Ranshaw House. And some of the organizations there are like, "Well, how are we gonna get people to their appointments here at Ranshaw House?" So, and she asked me if we could maybe do a modification of NL Tap to do that. But the thing with NL Tap is that it, it's a nice neat box that the eight dispatchers and 30-plus drivers know really well. And if I modify anything or make special changes, it kind of, it throws everybody off. And I don't want somebody to pull up, a driver to pull up and pick someone up and say, "Well, I can't take you there. You're gonna have to pay for it full price." You know, because that, if it's some special exception or this change has been made, I gotta do it in a really conscious process. So the idea of maybe modifying NL Tap, or maybe having a separate contract or something for Ranshaw House would be great. But if there's another transit opportunity, that'd be even better. North Liberty Medical Hub, again. I just throwing that out there with UIHC Merce and Steiner. You know, getting people access to transportation would be awesome. Okay, and then me. I would love if we had more transit in North Liberty. I get, I'm on-call essentially 24/7 for NL Tap. So I get texts and emails at all times. Here are some of the things. I lost my card. Will you send me a new one? So that might take me just a couple of minutes to do, but it's another thing I have to do every day. I don't like that driver that happens, and then I have to, which I have a great relationship with Rod at Yellow Cab. We work together on these problems really well. But, you know, when I have to say, "So-and-so can't drive so-and-so," well, then that's a whole nother part of the managing the process, and it's just another level of oversight. Can I get special permission to go wherever? You know, sometimes it falls with NL, NL Tap, and we can work on it. Sometimes I have to make a special exception, then I have to email Rod, and then I have to call Rod, and, you know, all of those things turn into work, more work for me. "I've been waiting outside for 30 minutes. My groceries, are they coming?" I mean, I get this text all the time. "We are contracting with a private business. We, in our contract, we give them up to 45 minutes to arrive. But if you're sitting outside with your groceries and your ice cream's melting, you're wondering where they're at, you're trying to call Yellow Cab, and nobody's showing up, and it's a big thing, then I have to step in, and it's more time on me." Again, my work is within walking distance, but I can't find nearby daycare because of my infant's special needs. This was one that we worked, I worked on a couple of years ago. There was just no options for her. She had to rely on family. "The hospital says my elderly mom can't wait inside for her own ride home because of COVID-19 policies, IRL." And this has happened three times now. She's been outside for 30 minutes in the cold. So the pickup-drop-off spot because of COVID-19, they kind of shuffle them out the door and say they can't come in and wait. And so, and with the senior population I serve, that's a problem. "Yellow Cab needs to change our business out." So someone's Rod will contact me. He's like, "His staff has shrunk because of the pandemic. He's not, he's had, also like everybody else, having a hard time finding new employees." So, you know, we've, we've limited hours. We've changed things around. So every time we change something with NL Tap, I have to notify everybody who's on it that we've made, modified these changes, and then everybody at Yellow Cab has to be trained, and it's just a thing. And then, yeah, I'm on-call 24/7. So I would love some other options for transportation. Okay, and so I just threw all the numbers that were on the other slides together on this one, if you want to do kind of a comparison. Again, if you look at the cost in North Liberty per trip, the annual average, and that's for FY '21, the $75 for seats. It was, it was $28 in FY '19 just because the ridership was up quite a bit more. 622 rides in FY '19 versus 472 in FY '21. And the more you do, the, you know, each one costs less. And then, like the Corleville one in FY '19 annually, we did 10,624 rides, and then in FY '21, we did 3,109. So the people who are choosing fixed route transit is just diminishing. And is that, you know, because people are now working from home? So they, they're traveling different, like I mentioned at the beginning. We don't know. I'd have to look at it, but... And that's it. This is kind of opportunities that we don't, so in, in the orange boxes is what we, we have right now. And there are opportunities outside of that that I would love to explore with you guys. And that's it. Sorry, that was very long.
Angie, thanks for doing this for us. Thanks for everything you've done with NL Tap especially. And I'll try not to text you at 10:00 at night. Keep you off there. I've asked Angela to present as a way to tee up our discussion next month when we get into the planning. We've gotten through the budget session already on, on the money that we'll spend, but I want to be able to have some context here as we sit down next month to go through our planning session. So I want you guys to, to keep this information in mind, especially that information that's on page 24 of her presentation. You've been up there for a while. Do you guys have anything, any questions to point at Angie while she's here in front of us? Otherwise, we can discuss this more in depth at our planning session.
I don't have any direct questions. I mean, this is great that this service is available because you are filling a gap. But we also know that with filling that gap is, is unveiling a lot of other challenges with that. And so we'll continue to look at creative ways to fix it, and knowing that until we can get something that, I mean, there's never a one-size-fits-all because someone's gonna need a route somewhere that it doesn't go. So as long as we can have, you know, look at our walkways and how we're accessing businesses and thinking of, you know, some of the basics, I think it's a great starting point. And hopefully, you know, once resources are in Ranshaw, it will cut down on some of the transportation, and maybe it will be easier to look at some of those routes. So I hope that as you start talking to Mica, or, you know, as you listen to other people talk about some of their frustrations or limitations with having to have transportation that goes to Iowa City or Corleville, that you're also considering what some of those routes may be, and also where some of those individuals or families are calling from. Because I'm pretty sure some of them probably live in the same areas if we're talking about seniors or low-income, low-to-moderate income families that's using this service. So just, just to throw that out there, and I'm pretty sure you're already thinking about it, but, you know, it's something to consider, because we'll continue to face, you know, more issues and challenges along the way. But kudos to you, and sorry that you have to be on-call 24/7.
I like serving people. I love, North Liberty is wonderful in that we have lots of pockets. Instead of really concentrated low-income areas, we just have them spread around, and, you know, nobody would know. It's, it's wonderful. And that's kind of the goal with planning, is to kind of not concentrate.
But that's some, that's some of the small-town feel that everybody talks about, and people continue to highlight as we reach out for feedback in, in our visioning. And it's, it's folks like Angela that are taking that time, that we have the ability as a smaller community to be able to do one-on-one services like this, and not just a one-size-fits-all. And she is customizing that to the needs of our community, which is very important.
And if I could put a bug in the ear, I love the idea of micro-transit. So Horizon's up in Cedar Rapids, does a program called VIA, uses technology heavily to do door-to-door service, uses an algorithm method instead of the traditional bus stops, and decides where to pick you up. You know, it could do a virtual bus stop if five people in the same neighborhood needed to be picked up. It would tell you on your app or your phone call that you make, but it's really cool. So we've been looking at that quite a bit.
Thank you again, Angie. There are a couple of members of the Transit Committee. I asked all of them to actually, if they wanted to come tonight. And to recognize them, first of all, Brian has been sitting on this Transit Committee for us for a number of years. This work that this committee is doing has gotten us to this point so far over the last number of years. And what Angie, Angie has presented to us here is, is a product of that and what we've been able to do thus far. Jerry Keel is in the audience and is breaking away for a comment. And I just want to recognize Jim in the audience as well, as members of our committee, and say thank you, guys. So Jerry had a couple of things he wanted to share with us, and I thought this would be a better time to do that inside of this Transit Committee discussion.
Well, I want to talk a little bit about the Transit Committee itself. I've been on the committee, as has Brian, since the inception, which I believe was September of 15. Brian, is that about right?
Probably the second time around, yeah.
It has not met in the last year and a half. And Angie talked a little bit about problems that we're having, but without a committee meeting, you can't have communication. And that's what I really want to get involved with, is solving some of these problems. I think we can do it. We came up with the taxi program. I've heard nothing in a year and a half about what that is doing. So I was glad to hear Angie's presentation, because I think there's problems that we as a committee can work on. Now, several years ago, I asked that the council establish the Transit Committee as a formal body of this city. I don't think we did anything with that. I think we, we need to do something like that. We need to have officers in that committee. People that can call the meetings, have some topics to talk about. I think that's crucial, that we have representation from the broader community. And I don't know how many, and maybe Brian does, how many people do we have left on that committee? There's three of us here tonight.
Yeah, there's just one other active member that I'm aware of, Jerry. That would have been Dina.
Dina, okay.
I'm sorry, I'm Brenda Conrad. Excuse me. My apologies, Brenda. I know she's watching.
So we need to have some changes. Now let me tell you a personal example. Angie, I thought, did a good job of talking about problems. But last Friday, I had a... But last Friday, I had a procedure at the, at Mercy Hospital. I couldn't get home because they won't let you go without an escort and a responsible person. What we need to do is work with Mercy and I assume the same is true for you hospitals and the veterans. But we, that's a project we could work on to get some people that could assume responsibility for people uh, when they're being discharged after a day procedure. Uh, I was told after I talked to Social Security and Medicare that that's not an allowable thing to keep the person overnight because of the expense involved. The other thing that I, you probably already know this, but I'm a member of the, uh, Johnson County Advisory Committee, which is a part of Horizon since the merger took place a couple of years ago. Johnson County has a new grant for communities that, uh, do not have fixed route transportation. That's something we need to be tying into for, you know, a 20,000 population community. There's some alternatives there I think that we could work on as a committee. Now Angie, I didn't call you because, to get that, I had to find a friend because my wife doesn't drive anymore. And, uh, you know, that's just the way things are in our household. So I really want to reinvigorate that committee with membership and I'm going to suggest that since telecommunications meets quarterly, that the Transportation Committee meet quarterly. I think it's vital that we have an effort to restructure that committee and solve problems and not let them be in the hands of one person. Why we haven't had meetings in over a year, I don't know. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Jim, anything to add?
Plan to speak, but, uh, hearing your presentation and having been on the committee, one thing I'd like to make an observation of in the history of, um, transit in North Liberty. We started out as a small community, as has been mentioned, but you hear in the news about how big, how fast North Liberty is growing. I think one thing that Angie mentioned is this, that we need to start planning to be there ahead of what's happening or what's going to happen. And rather than look at all of the answers that we have been able to come up with for possible solutions for individual problems in transportation. What happens is, is that all those different choices turn out to be expensive nuggets that we can pick up to throw at an issue. All that does is that it turns our whole community into a gated community. Because then it says, transportation, regardless of who you are, is an expensive item. So if you don't have income to cover the expensive transportation, you're outside the community. Let's think about that.
Thanks, Jim. All right. Angie, thank you again for updating us and, and, uh, helping to set the table here for us. All right. I'll move on to item number 12, which is our maximum levy FY23. And item A is the public hearing regarding proposed maximum levy for fiscal year 2023. I'll open up this public hearing right now. If anybody has comments on this agenda item, now is the time to make those known. All right. Hearing none of those. Item B then is resolution number 2022-13, a resolution approving the maximum tax dollars from certain levies for the city of North Liberty's proposed budget for fiscal year 2022-2023. Could I have a motion for this, please?
So moved, second.
And moved and seconded. If you guys have any questions, uh, ahead of time, Ryan, is there anything that you want to tee up on this one?
I would just say that this, this is only, uh, this resolution only applies to our general fund and trust and agency levies. This does not count for the debt service levy. And I, I'm sure it's self-explanatory, but what it's saying is if we kept the dollar amount the same, the dollars of actual revenue that we received in FY22, the tax rate would be $9.52 roughly. Instead, we're leaving the tax rate the same as it was. And so we're collecting, uh, about 6% more in revenue. And because it's more than 2%, we're required to have this max levy and it's required at two-thirds of all, uh, the council.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? You guys have any comments before we get into that?
So and then the total with the debt service on this is going to be at 1132?
Yes, that is correct. I can get you that. I'll stand by here. Yeah, well, no, let's see, yeah, 1132 is exactly correct. That's a 19 cent reduction from the pre-FY22.
Anything else? Okay. Tracy, a roll call, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 13 is North Liberty Newspaper of Record. The resolution number 2022-14 is a resolution approving the designation of the Gazette as the official newspaper for the city of North Liberty. Could I have a motion for this, please?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, it's pretty self-explanatory in here. Does anybody have any comments or questions?
Mayor, I just, uh, obviously we don't have any control. It's very sad to see, uh, North Liberty later not able to be, um, here anymore. And, uh, I know we don't have any other option. I don't like it, but what do we do? I don't, I don't know.
I think that's the consensus of all of us up here. So I do appreciate though, the Gazette, um, and their responsiveness and what they've done for us over the years to pitch in, uh, and they're going to do a fantastic job here for us. So, um, I'm with you though. Any other comments? Okay. Uh, Tracy, roll call, please.
Smith.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 14 is Right of Way Acquisition. This is for the area around Christine Grant Elementary. This is resolution number 2022-15. A resolution accepting the warranty deed from Iowa City Community School District to the city of North Liberty for the establishment of Right of Way. Could I have a motion for this one, please?
So move.
Second.
And moved and seconded. Grant, you want to add anything to this? Any other comments?
Uh, sure.
Well, I mean, I'll make it interesting here for, for the meeting.
Oh yeah, let's, let's make.
Get the voice box working a little bit.
Yeah. So this was, uh, realized that along the way that, uh, a transaction that was originally intended, uh, never, never actually occurred. Uh, and so this is cleaning up lines of Right of Way where the, where the city ends and the school begins. Um, and I, I don't know how to make it more interesting than all.
It's, you've done it. Jazz hands will do it for us. All right. Thank you. Do you guys have any questions for that, any discussion?
I, I was just gonna, I forgot to ask if, I don't think there's any reason that I can't vote on this.
Not, not at all.
Yeah.
Thanks for asking that, Eric. All right. Tracy, roll call, please.
Wason.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 15 is the same deal, different story, uh, with Jones Boulevard Project. Resolution number 2022-16, a resolution approving the purchase of Right of Way and a temporary construction easement for the Jones Boulevard Extension Project. I should clarify, it's not the same story, but give a motion for this one as well, please.
So move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do you guys have any questions or you want to exercise that voice box on this one?
Necessary right of way for Jones Boulevard to complete the intersection as, as contemplated. If we didn't do this now, uh, we could, uh, with the consent of the property owner, this could be something we revisit in a phase two, but I think it's, uh, with the, the way costs are right now, this is easy for me to recommend.
A good idea. Any questions, comments? Okay. Tracy, roll call, please.
Harrington.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 16 is our emergency siren contract. This is resolution number 2022-17. A resolution approving the state of work contract between the city of North Liberty and Frontline Plus Fire and Rescue. Could I have a motion for this, please?
So move.
Second.
And moved and seconded. Ryan, do you want to fill in anything on this one?
I would just note that generally we can handle these types of purchases through our purchasing policy with the states requiring a little, some additional paperwork here. We're asking the city council to approve a resolution that approves that paperwork and get the process rolling.
Thank you. Super simple. Any questions? Okay. Tracy, roll call, please.
Harrington.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Item 17 is the assessment resolution. This is resolution number 2022-18, a resolution assessing delinquent amounts owed to the city of North Liberty to individual property taxes. Have a motion for this one, please.
So moved.
Second.
And moved and seconded. Do you guys have any questions? Quite a list out there.
Is this more than we normally see?
Generally, yes. Uh, however, we do have another staff member that was brought on board. So it was last year, it was me, uh, by myself and it was awful. I will say, looking at the list, we have some repeat offenders from last year that just don't bother shoveling. Uh, we do have a very active community and we do get phone calls. So when we go out, we look around and, and we send letters. It's not like we're doing just, just going out and doing them. So we, we make our best effort to give people a try. Uh, by city code, we're not required to notify them. We don't think that's fair. Um, but this should be, this should be the bulk of it for the year.
And to clarify, this isn't, uh, work that you are out looking for. These are community initiated requests, um, made to you and staff.
We know as soon as it snows, we're, with the phone calls start coming.
Grant, do you think it would be helpful in the future to look at frequent flyers at increasing penalty?
No, I don't. I think, uh, if you're asking me my personal opinion, no, uh, I, I don't, I don't think that's, uh, a way to, you, you, there, I suppose there could be, but I, I think that might run afoul of, uh, uh, a particular state code provision on how we, on how we treat responsibility for those things.
And to keep, and we're not penalizing them here. We're simply paying for the work that.
This is just, just recouping our costs.
Correct. But if, if people are reliant on that or thinking that it's just as easy to, uh, to waste staff time, uh, and increase costs for the city, every year continually.
Let me look into that. I'll, I'll, I don't want to shoot just only from the hip. I'll look into that. And if I, if I find a different answer, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Any other questions? Tracy, a roll call, please.
Sittig.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, item 19, this is our third consideration and adoption of ordinance number 2022-01. An ordinance amending chapter 167 of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances by amending the use regulations on property located on the south side of Dennison Avenue approximately 130 feet east, of Brookridge Avenue located in North Liberty, Iowa, to those set forth in the municipal code for the RD10 two-unit residence district. Can someone send this up for us?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Do you guys have any other questions? Seen this a couple of times now. All right. Tracy, roll call, please.
Sittig.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Harrington.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item 20 is Vintage Estates PAD Amendment. Russ?
Okay. So this is a previously approved, uh, PAD allows for 30 single-family residents, uh, well under construction. I'm sure that you've seen. The RS4, the underlying zoning district is RS4 and that requires a 30-foot rear yard setback. Uh, sometimes throughout this process, you, I have the authority to provide some administrative flexibility. Uh, however, I wasn't comfortable waiving the perimeter setback essentially. And so I talked it over with the applicant and their engineer. Uh, they had a small number of units that wanted to go a little bit larger. Uh, so we needed to go back through the process. Uh, so this would reduce the setback for a couple of units along the north and west property line from 30 feet to 25 feet. The PAD uh, authorizes you to do that. Uh, staff doesn't feel it's a, a very large impact at all. Uh, going back through the process, like I said, it was a technicality. Uh, we did have a neighborhood meeting. We had a few people attend, just curious about what was going on, but we haven't had any objections to the request throughout the process. Uh, Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval and the, uh, project engineers in the audience, if you have any questions.
I would love to hear his voice. He's been patient enough sitting out here. Understanding audits in transit. Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, Jason Ludden with Snyder and Associates, project engineer for the project. Um, as Ryan mentioned, there are only two units we are looking at, uh, to get that extension on. And that would be unit one and unit 11. And the reason for those extensions is we are looking for three-bedroom units on those two units while the rest of these are one-bedroom, or excuse me, two-bedroom units. So that kind of gives us a good mix within the development here. Um, I will say all of these units have been sold. So the likelihood of one of them upgrading to this additional five feet is very highly unlikely. Um, on the north, one is the only one that is not built or under construction. Um, so that would be the only option for that five-foot extension. And then on the west side, there are only three units, 10, 11, and 12 that butt up to that setback. But 11 is the only one that we are looking at for that five-foot extension. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does that do anything to sightlines or fence lines or anything like that over time?
It kind of breaks up the sightlines along there. So you don't just get one straight long wall of, of units through there. So that does kind of help break that up a little bit too. And that's why we feel like it'd be a good idea here as well.
And then some of that will be like the patio in the back that sticks back there. So it's not like the house is, you know, quite a bit farther.
Right, correct. Yeah. A lot of these patios do kind of sit inset, so they don't necessarily stick out behind the, behind the units.
Question. Just to be clear, is this, um, this is just for these two units or this, this is going to apply the entire PAD?
So it, it would apply to the units along the north and west property line. Uh, you, you could impose a restriction that they apply only to one and 11. Cause that's what's been represented if that's, if that's what you choose to do. Uh, like, like Jason said, the, the majority of the units with the exception of one are under construction. I took a look at the house plans today. They don't really lend themselves to extending out to that additional five feet. I think they have a number of units that are already, or the plans are already drawn essentially for those two-bedroom units. And so these, these were kind of exceptions where they wanted the, a small variation.
Question as well. Jason, thanks for sitting there and
Yes.
Sitting through this and for being available to us.
Thank you.
You like that too? Good. We'll invite you back for our next one too. Item C is our public hearing regarding proposed PAD amendment. If there's anyone in the audience that has anything to say about the matter, going once, going twice. All right. Item D then is our first consideration of ordinance number 2022-05. An ordinance amending the Vintage Estates RS4 PAD single-use residence planned area development by reducing the rear yard setback from 30 feet to 25 feet adjacent to the north and west property line on property located on the west side of Jones, South Jones Boulevard, west of Western Terminus of Corey Court, located in North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for that, please?
So, I'll second.
And moved and seconded. Do you guys have any other questions?
Just, I guess my only question would be from a legal standpoint, is it easier just to say the north and west sides? Or it should?
I mean, that, that's the effect of this is the north and west sides of those things.
Otherwise you'd have to use, you know, how hard is it to say number one and number 11 lots?
Pretty easy. Uh, yeah, the, the, it's, as it's written, it's for, it's for the north and west side. Um, and, uh, and I think that's what Russ and I discussed. Uh, if, if the council wanted to amend it, just those units, you certainly could. But that's, that's what's written is for, is, uh, the setback, the rear yard setback from 30 to 25 feet for every, everything along the northern border and the western border. Is that, am I got that right? Yeah.
To clarify, it's there, most of these units have been started already. So
Correct.
It would only be these two that are really impacted anyway.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
But that's outside of my, initially, right? I mean, presumably someone could add on at a later date.
Yes. Yes.
You guys good to go with this one then?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Tracy, a roll call, please.
Harrington.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Wason.
Aye.
Sittig.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all. Item 21 is the zoning code. This is the third consideration. This is the third consideration and adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh-two. An ordinance amending chapters one sixty-five through one seventy and one seventy-three of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances governing the administration, organization enforcement, and definitions of zoning districts, development, and site regulations. Could I have a motion for this one, please?
So moved.
Second.
We might have a comment here.
Yes.
Do you want to take public comment now, or I never know when to interrupt, I'm sorry.
You know, we don't have it on there, but you have been sitting patiently in the back row as well. We don't have a public commentary, but I'll entertain one. Jump on up here.
I appreciate that.
No problem.
My name's Ryan Holland, I'm with Denton Davis Brown Law Firm out of Des Moines. I'm here on behalf of the Iowa Manufactured Housing Association. I believe my partner, Jody McDougall, maybe exchanged emails with Mr. Lentz or someone, maybe even you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure. I'm the out-of-towner, as you can tell. The, the simple request here tonight is we're, we're asking you to table the vote on, on this consideration to give us time to have more dialogue with you all as to whether the amendment as written adequately takes into consideration the mobile home park owners in, in North Liberty and the mobile homeowners in North Liberty. We sent a letter via email, as is everything these days, maybe even just today. I don't think it was part of the council packet. I had to do the Ctrl F to try to find it and didn't find it. The, if you would oblige me, I know we're running late in the evening, but the, the simple amendment that we're requesting, which again, I'm not asking you to take up tonight, I'm just asking you to table the vote tonight, so you could take up this amendment, is to make clear that the, the changes in, I believe it's one sixty-nine, I'm sure Mr. Lentz could tell me off the top of his head. You're essentially, you're moving something from one sixty-seven, putting it in one sixty-nine to our MH district, which imposes additional or new bulk zoning regulations, including things like setbacks, storage, facilities, green spacing, things like that. The, the ask is that it be made express that those would not apply to existing mobile home parks, right? And I think the communications that we've had so far are that, well, we can't say that for sure. You know, we don't know how we would apply a brand-new ordinance until we apply a brand-new ordinance. And I, I get that, right? I'm in front of various boards like yours all the time, whether it's in this city or county or whatever the case might be. And no one ever wants to be pinned down as to how my client, or in this case, case of a group of clients, might be affected by the ordinance. And I totally understand that. This is an issue that continuously has come up for us over the past probably five or six years now. We, we got a statute passed at the state level on replacement of homes, for example. We're working to get a statute through the state level again this year. If successful, it would essentially be in, I don't want to say direct contradiction to your zoning requirements, but pretty doggone close. I told my partner, Ms. McDougall, while files them, I'd say, well, if the state passes the law, then we'll deal with it then, right? But again, I think our first communication with you all might not have been much more than a couple of days ago. And we're always trying to work with cities and counties as opposed to litigating things after the fact. And again, I want to reiterate, I'm not here on behalf of any particular mobile home park owner, although I'm sure we have clients here. I'm here on behalf of the Manufactured Housing Association. And I do want to point out as well that it, it impacts the folks owning the homes at the end of the day almost more than the park owners, right? If, if a park owner can't put a home on a lot, it certainly impacts their, their rent roll, impacts their bottom line. But it's one more mobile home that can't be placed, right? It's, it's affordable housing that is potentially not getting put in because of new zoning regulations. And again, any new mobile home park that would come into North Liberty would absolutely and obviously have to comply with the, the new zoning regulations. As was stated probably more artfully in the letter that we sent, the ask is simply to make express that this would not apply to, to mobile home parks that exist as of today. It's a much larger conversation, so again, I, I'm happy to have that conversation with you all at eight oh-five tonight, if you would want to entertain it. The, the goal really, though, is just to request with, with all due respect, I know how these work, right? You get to the third reading, like, we've had all the public comment part, you know? We sent out the notices. Nobody showed up the first time, and nobody showed up the second time, and now you're here five after eight on the third time. Again, with all due respect, all we're asking is for a table of this, to have more conversation with you all. And if that additional conversation results in you saying, thanks, but no thanks, you know, we, we did our best. If, if it passes, then, you know, I don't know where, I don't know. We start working with Mr., with, with Mr. Lentz as to how it gets applied, and, you know, I've been down that road a bunch of times. And it's always better if we're able to work with the city ahead of time. And again, we are late to the game. I fully acknowledge that. But it is always so much better for our clients and quite frankly, for the city and Mr. Lentz's phone calls that he'll get from me otherwise, right? To sort of have this all figured out, how it is impacting stakeholders, and if at all possible, consequences on, on the passage of a statute. I'm not saying you haven't considered these things before. My guess is it hasn't maybe been considered from the perspective of an association like the IMHA. And with that, I would happily take questions.
Thank you, Ryan. I'll, I'll start up here. I was in communication along with Grant yesterday with Andy about this.
Andy Conlin?
Yes, with Andy. And our comments really aren't as a matter of whether to proceed or not. Grant, you're going to have to correct me if I'm wrong here. This would be kind of an exception to an exception that we've got built into this ordinance right now. And it is something that is likely not to be even within our hands and our control at some point in time at the state level. So us doing, making an exception for the exception may be convenient enough right now, but ultimately, as you said a moment ago, the state's going to come back and tell us what we're going to have to do anyway. You had mentioned that this has come up a handful of times. I don't believe it's come up in North Liberty, if I can, if I can interject that. So while this is of concern in very unique circumstances, it's not something that has ever been a problem in North Liberty and something that we've applied. With that, I'd probably muddy the waters a little bit more. Ryan, thanks for your comments here. Grant, can you jump in and help to point this group in the conversation that you had with me yesterday?
I sure can. I would also, just as, at the outset, note that I've worked with Mr. Holland before.
True.
And I have no doubt that he is coming at this with the, the appropriate, appropriate angle, and it's, it's not an unreasonable request to, to table this thing. Thing is, my, my, my read of our code has to do with the exception that the mayor was talking about is something called illegal non-conforming use. So I'll use Holliday across the road as, as an example. In nineteen sixty-five, when that came in, there were no side area setbacks. And so the units that are placed there go right up to the property line, and that's, and that's where they get to stay. And until a use has been discontinued, generally speaking, up until the legislation that was passed in twenty nineteen, up until a lease has been discontinued, then you get, you get to stay that way. You would commonly refer that as being grandfathered in, right? We, we might create a new setback that we just did for the, the PAD here a little bit ago, saying, you really need some separation between these things. But as long as those, those pads are getting used as pads, then the setbacks apply from, from where they were originally. And so there is basically no setback for Holliday, but for Gulfview, for example, there is. They came out a little bit later, and there was some setbacks in place. The, the discontinuing of a use is, is defined in state code for counties, and we've adopted it. It's been the same for, for the city for, for literally decades. It's hard for me to go, know exactly how far back it goes. But the standard is if the use is discontinued for more than one year or it's destroyed to the extent where fifty percent of it, it loses fifty percent of its property value, then if it's reconstructed or, or if it's made not vacant, then the current zoning laws apply. That is not exactly the case with manufactured homes. With the, the new legislation that came in in twenty nineteen, we, the city can't adopt or enforce any ordinance, zoning ordinance, that would have, that would prevent the continuance of the property owner's lawful non-conforming use that had existed prior to that unless the city proves that discontinuing it is necessary for the safety of life or property or that it is, the, the discontinuance was not outside the control of the property owner. So if there's a, if, if, for example, we had pads that were empty for, for more than a year, we would have to prove that it was, it was within the control of the property owner for them not to be empty for the new pads. So there's, there are some protections put in place. That happened at the state level in twenty nineteen, and it preempted our code, right? That, that portion of our, of our ordinance that would normally, and I know, it's eight o'clock, I want to get back to my family, too. This, this conversation is happening to me, too. I get it. There are some, so there are some state-level restrictions on what we're already able to do in place. When we spoke with Mr. Andy-
Conlin.
Conlin. Spoke with him today. Nice guy. This, what they're asking for is, is basically an exception to our non-conforming use, that, that our non-conforming use statute does not apply in, in these, in these, in this situation for these, or illegal non-conforming use. But that portion of our zoning code is not up for grabs tonight. It's, that's in chapter one seventy-one. And we are, so if we were, if we wanted to, even if we wanted to, and staff is against the moment, the amendment they're proposing. But even if we wanted to, we wouldn't be able to make that amendment tonight. We'd have to republish. We'd have to take this back to a first reading. And so why not table it? Well, we already have, Mr. Reston can tell you, we have another zoning ordinance amendment coming up next month. I talked to Mr. Conlin today. Staff is happy to continue this conversation, and I, I think we can, we might be able to find a, some sort of Goldilocks solution that fits just right. I, I don't think that staff recommends tabling this. I think, I think we've come, come far enough right now, go ahead and get this one enacted, and you can have it on our scouts' honor that we have another amendment coming up that we can absolutely publish for and include a discussion for chapter one seventy-one to, to include this exception from, from manufactured housing to as, as a, an exception to our exception for discontinuing and what discontinuing means in that, in that, in that circumstance. And I, I think, I think that would be the better place for it in our code. Since we have, since we've excluded one seventy, one seventy-one, and one seventy-two from our, from this ordinance amendment, we couldn't do it tonight even if we wanted to. Eight minutes have somehow passed, and I'm sorry. If you have any questions, let me know.
And to recap real quick, I've had, I've had the benefit of being part of this conversation for about twenty-four hours right now. What, what Ryan and the Manufactured Housing Association are asking to do affect chapter one seventy-one inside of our ordinances, they don't affect the items that are in front of us right now that we've gotten through. And to paraphrase Grant in less than eight minutes, we can add these and have this conversation to have them part of chapter one seventy-one when Russ brings it back to us.
Would you oblige me one final comment?
By all means.
Okay. Mr. Lentz has ably advised you all. I, I think the, the one quibble I would have is that manufactured housing, mobile home parks are an oddity when it comes to zoning, right? They, they just are. I, I agree with you generally, Mr. Lentz, that, that the use or what constitutes discontinuance often is the fighting issue. And that's usually in the non-conforming use portion of the zoning ordinance. Because of the oddity, though, I have seen in the past where this sort of statute, which is not in the non-conforming use portion of the zoning ordinance, essentially gets bootstrapped, right? And, and it, you deal with the replacement of a homes issue, and you could still, I'm sure you all have talked about this, but there are ways to be compliant with the current state statute and still not have a discontinuance of use, not be in the non-conforming use section at all, especially if the park itself is zoned. You guys are RMH, I believe, right? Is there, does the designation? You might not even be touching arguably the non-conforming use portion of your zoning ordinance. And that's the argument I've heard from countless county attorneys and, and city attorneys. And so because of the, the somewhat strange nature of mobile home parks insofar as you have, you know, upwards of four hundred individual houses on one lot, essentially, right? It's not, it's not an apartment building where one unit can just get pulled out, you know, like Jenga style. Because of that, I, I agree with you that generally, the non-conforming use statute is the, is the fight, is the fighting, is the, is the arena of the, of the battle. However, these sorts of statutes, the zoning ordinance itself, is often at least theater one A. And so again, to try to continue to have that conversation as, as to how those two interact and, and not even getting assurances, but really just getting a better understanding of how North Liberty believes those two will interact is, is really what we're after. And I, I said a brief comment, and I've, I've already lied, so I appreciate, appreciate the time.
No problem. Thanks, Ryan.
Mayor, we've had a motion and a second, yes?
We have.
May I call for a vote?
I'd recommend that. Tracy, roll call, please.
Smith?
Aye.
Siddick?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Thank you all.
Can I just follow up with a question for Grant? Real, very, very-
Is it some, yeah, is it something for the benefit of the audience, or?
I, I just want to clarify that there is nothing legally flawed with, with the, the ordinance that we just approved. I mean, there, there's nothing that they pointed out. It's just something that might be interpreted a certain way that, that they might have a problem with in the future.
I agree with that.
All right, thank you. Item twenty-two is our rental code, and this is also third consideration and adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash oh-three. An ordinance amending chapter one forty-six of the North Liberty Code of Ordinances governing rental housing procedure and regulations and structure procedure requirements. Could I have a motion for this one, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions on this third consideration? Tracy, roll call, please.
Siddick?
Aye.
Wason?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. And item twenty-three is our city rezonings. This is also a third consideration and adoption of ordinance number twenty-two-two-dash-oh-four. An ordinance amending zoning on various properties in the City of North Liberty, Iowa. Could I have a motion for this, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any other questions? Tracy, roll call, please.
Wason?
Aye.
Siddick?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Harrington?
Aye.
All right. Item twenty-four, anything for old business purposes that we haven't discussed yet tonight?
Mayor, I would just point out that the special election is on spring break week. Many like to go places. Maybe it's the water park to our friends to the, to the east. Maybe it's farther south to get out of the snow. If you're doing that, please remember that it is a very small timeframe to get your absentee ballot. So I believe those requests are due by Monday.
That's correct.
So please, please do that or take advantage of early voting. So you can all go enjoy family time and spring break, but also tend to the business that is so very important to us in electing a new council member.
Thank you. Item twenty-five is new business. Heck, the meeting, I can't imagine there's much more out there. All right. Could I have a motion to adjourn then, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed? Thank you all for your time tonight.